As well, and you know, it's sort of like, who cares what's going on inside that building? What really belongs to the community is the exterior of the building. So people come and go from it, but really, you know, what happens inside the building, as long as it's, you know, basically civil and legal, um, what, you know, does it, why does it matter whether they're meditating or sitting at laptops, whatever. Um, okay. The, we're, this Borough Council's going to manage parking. We're going to, we're going to figure out a way with our Borough Administration and Managers and experts how to manage our parking, and I, I just don't think that's a concern that I share with Mr. White right about. I don't think that parking needs to be tethered to a mixed-use 50/50. I don't, I agree with the 50/50, but I, but I think we will, we will solve that problem. I don't think we have a liability down the road by, um, changing the parking terms and terms of the borough any time in the future. I don't think any municipalities ever had a legal problem with doing that. You know, that's what municipalities do, they manage their parking. Um, so that's not a deal breaker for me. Uh, I'm amenable to a definition of professional office that creates an employee cap if it can be done legally, lawfully. I don't know if that, if it's simple definition change and it can be done. I mean, why not? You know, and certain number of employees per square feet. Um, other than that, there are no, I have nothing more to add. Those are my comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is my opportunity to say that, uh, to the public, you've heard a lot of very careful consideration by all the different councilors on this draft. My own opinion is that, um, I think we all agree actually, that the 100% commercial usage that's written into this property for civic institutional buildings is something that, uh, that we need to change, uh, if we're going to move this document forward personally.
Mostly, I agree.
Right, mostly, I agree. I personally believe, even if I was okay myself with 100% commercial use, to after going through one of the most, um, public and, uh, you know, the hours that citizens committed, uh, to discussing this issue when we were discussing a 50/50, and then to move it in the opposite direction of where we just were, I think it's disingenuous to council and the public working together. And I think that is something that we need to hash out. Now, Mr. White bright discussed that he feels in the next month, maybe we could figure out what that is. And so that everyone can understand the process, if we change the draft in substantive way, uh, it has to go back to the county for their review. And then that review takes about how much time, Mr. Metrick?
Council has to wait 30 days to approve it or get a letter from the county, whichever happens sooner.
Okay, that sounds good. And then upon receiving that, we could have a public meeting, probably one of our regularly scheduled meetings, to move to introduce the ordinance, uh, for a hearing. That hearing would be within 30 days. And then following the hearing, it could be that evening, council could choose to vote or at a future public meeting after the hearing within 30 days of the hearing, right? Or 60 days total from the time the clock starts.
No, no, for sure.
I'll let our solicitor on Monday night clear that up, but it's something in those general parameters. Um, everyone who's been listening, I think it would be helpful, the only showstopper that really seems to be a deal breaker in terms of developing a consensus is the Elmwood Avenue Church. And I know that Bob has given a lot of thought to the details. Do you want to make a proposal of some kind of, uh, change to this language, or do you want?
Well, I outlined some that I think we need to do, it'd be either our county planner, Sean, or our solicitor to kind of squeeze it. And I, I think the question, you know, the question of the other councilman, there's actually three showstoppers for me though.
Okay, yeah, I kind of got lost in terms of showstoppers.
Showstopper one being the church, showstopper two being commercial use of those green, uh, the Elmwood Avenue, um, and then showstopper three was the apartment buildings on South Norbert.
Okay.
I thought the ones on South Norbert were, were de minimis because, you know, even though people can disagree or not agree, I don't think it's going to happen on them. So rather than take the risk of it happening until we get to flesh it out more, I thought it was fair to ask people to do that. The second part, the Elmwood Avenue green, that being commercial, um, I don't think that's really been vetted out by the council. Uh, you know, that's, that's a pretty open ability right now on those four or five properties, um, to have almost any use that's a commercial use, if I'm not mistaken.
Hello, Mr. Metrick.
That's what I was going to ask you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, let's talk about that green zone on the south side. Could you come up, Mr. Metrick?
Thank you.
Uh, the only thing I want to, I want to clarify is that of those properties on, off the 200 block of Elmwood, even though none of them have addresses over number 200, I suppose, um, the only property that qualifies of those five structures for a non-residential use is the one that qualifies, meets the lot size and age qualification for conditional use, and that's just a church. The other properties can't be used for non-residential purposes.
There's no byright or special exemption use for commercial, and it's only conditional use, and it's just that one property.
What the green does, in my view, what the green does is it allows for, um, the same number of residents that are currently there. If you look at that block of Elmwood Avenue, a lot of people live there, and if you were to change it to the bright orange, it would, if those were to ever be rebuilt, and if there was ever any incentive for somebody to rebuild those, they would have to build fewer residential units there. So I, I think there's great value in having the number of residential units that are currently there, or maybe even a few more, even if it was just one or two more, because it's right near the train station and, and, and it's right near the downtown, where people who live there probably use the grocery store. I would if I lived there. Um, and it really, otherwise it has very little, I think it's really just, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, but I think it's really just creates a different residential standard than the other colors, than the yellow.
So those can be knocked down combined and?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the case.
It's a residence, it's called General Urban Limited, it's not called Commercial Green.
Those can not be knocked down while they turn into a commercial. That's, Mr. Metrick has confirmed absolutely.
And then we have two showstoppers. One is de minimis.
Making progress, people. Let's, let's talk about, um, the apartments, uh, the yellow on South Norbert Avenue. Do you want to make a case?
Well, my, my case is, is twofold. First, the buildings that are, that could potentially, there's only three or four lots that I believe Sean's explained could potentially become that apartment shape.
From, from currently, I thought, home?
Yeah, there's a couple that are existing, that's fine. So then of those three or four lots, you get the two factors, you get the factor of additional density, you get the factor of the square-shaped building. Um, the square-shaped building has more issue personally, there is some density concern. I think the density can be managed in a sense, it's not that much more, three units go to six units. Someone has, or some people pointed out the potential of combining properties, which I'm not sure if there's any protection there from combining properties to make a larger apartment building. If you buy, you know, two, two house, two single-family houses on South Norbert Avenue, can you combine the property?
Yes.
So if there's a way to limit that, I don't know if there is within the code, or if it's, you know, a square footage of that area, you know, that, because that's a concern. There's a couple properties there I could see, you know, very easily being combined.
Do any of the councilors have thoughts on that?
Two thoughts, actually. One, I neglected to mention this earlier, um, I think it would be good in any consideration, in any hearing on this, to understand, and I want to do some homework on the side, what's required to combine properties? What's the process such that you could be, you know, what is the standard? Can you, you, could you be, uh, do you have to subject yourself to a variance process? Can we do that? Do you have to subject yourself to any kind of administrative approval? It's not something I want to hash out now, but understand a little better, um, because that might flip two adjacent properties into a large enough lot to meet a conditional use standard in some of the more density areas. Um, so that's actually the legal point, Bob, I do want to follow up on that. But, uh, the other thing is, uh, I think it's worth everybody keeping in mind that the, the multifamily property, it's, it's worth reviewing in the design section of the code, which I gotta scroll to the back of the pictures. The multifamily buildings have quite a few restrictions on them in terms of the size of any planer wall and the amount of permeability of window space that you have to have on those walls, along with needing an architectural element to set off part of the wall, so it's not just a brick wall from Florida roof, you need to put a cornice on the top. So I think if you're, if, if you're in one of the areas in town where you're thinking, hey, multifamily residences, like, don't look at the brick cubes that cover like 90% of the lot and have huge blank brick walls and think that that's actually like what could be built going forward. Take a hard look at that page around multifamily, um, and it's got a lot of restrictions, a setback, wall size, uh, window openings, architectural elements to break things up. That, you know, who knows what people end up building to fit into that, but it's not the, uh, not the big old brick sugar cube that you might be picturing.
So the existing buildings are compliant?
They, if you, I think, if you tore those guys down, you couldn't, I mean, you looked at Marion Fotherin, right? But I don't think if you rebuilt a multifamily unit on that lot, you couldn't do in a lot of cases what's there. I don't know.
Mr. Metrick, you're confirming that.
The detail of those lots as well as Sean was.
They could not be rebuilt in that way.
Yeah, so I wouldn't picture those, if you're saying like, hey, two more multifamily buildings, don't picture the one on the corner of Marion and, and South Norbert. That's big criteria that are in the current design guide.
Bob, you have some thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I still would rather that we didn't have, even, now, you know, it's a little more palatable that it's not going to be brick square, but I still think the advantage of doing that amongst a residential area, I mean, I live next to one of the apartment buildings, so I'm personally okay with that, I just don't know if we want, you know, that's something, you know, do we want more? What's the intent of that, you know? And again, I don't think it's going to happen within the next three to 12 years, but if it's not going to happen for three to 12 years, I prefer we get a better grasp on that rather than let it be out there, have it inadvertently happen, and then, um, and then recognize what it is. So, you know, that's something.
But also, I, I just want to reiterate that some of the items that have been mentioned at this table, you know, we talk about going back in, in any timeframe and making those adjustments should, or reviewing this document and any portion of it. Am I wrong, Bob? To go back and to adjust and make changes, uh, at any point. I mean, as far as I know, that we might be able to come up with a porch agreement, we might be able to come up with a different standard, but in, in this moment, um, it is, you know, it's a living document, and you know that, that we can go back at any time and change it.
Well, that's what I agree, it's like.
But I don't think we have.
I'd rather we change something that's more, you know, more intense later on than now and try, you know, it's much more difficult to reverse a building that goes up than to allow a building to go up.
And I'm suggesting to you that maybe, because you did give that, that timeframe of 12 years, that maybe what we're really talking about is passing this document and having that conversation about that space in.
Doing it the other way.
No, not, not so something bad happens, but I mean, you know, being able to, to have that conversation.
I think both options are definitely options.
So I have a question for you, Bob, actually, because you said that you would be an advocate for recoloring the yellow on South Norbert with another color, but you didn't say what color, so I wanted to, were you suggesting burnt orange or green or green?
Amber.
Because, because, yeah.
To take the apartment building choice out of that, that was the, that's what I wanted to do.
So that would be orange, then?
Orange.
Orange, okay. Just wanted to, I wanted you to be specific, because.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will, I would point out that if council in the future wanted to, let's say that this passed and it was changed to orange and we agreed to do that, and then later we wanted to create some kind of overlay, right? Where some is orange and some is yellow, and we figured out, we got our research in terms of combining lots and we're all comfortable in this specific area of the borough, um, the process for us to do that would be a little different than this process because it's a rezoning of a specific area of the borough versus the borough as a whole, is that correct?
Correct.
Could you describe that for us a little bit?
It would be a zoning, a map and text amendment, so you'd go through the 30-day period and there is a notification requirement because it's a specific area. So you'd have to notify affected property owners at the, at the minimum, and I believe neighboring property owners as well.
And when you say property owners, you mean specifically the owners of the properties, not necessarily the residents that live there? Only the owners of the properties? So for those apartment buildings that exist?
Right. Because that's one, and that's a neat thing, I think that's good to hear, because one of the things I meant to note before about this code, with the exception of two-stick figures in a courtyard picture, we have 120 pages or however long it is.
It's 104.
104 pages with no people in it. It's all buildings. And we're talking about, you know, community issues, and you want to include people in community, not just structures, so, right, I shouldn't say you, because I don't want to speak for others. And so when I hear about a specific neighborhood, now having an opportunity to weigh in on their neighborhood, that we've been talking about, finding the things within that neighborhood, will actually, those residents actually have some significant input to their neighborhood. I think that would be a positive, an opportunity to include, you know, people relevant to that neighborhood, so, I mean, the more so, I like that idea of taking it out now, and then later on, if somebody wants to bring it up as an overlay, let that neighborhood have more input.
So that's a plan. Um, I would say the other plan would be not to do that, to keep things as they are, to pass this code, and then to do the same review, and then possibly update the zoning in reverse. So those are the two plans that are on the table. Um, I'd like to move to the Elmwood Avenue Church, and see if we could discuss that, and, and then, once we kind of have all of our plans on the table, or different things that we may be able to kind of formalize into what we may agree or disagree, or how we could change this, and kind of make decisions about those plans, but I'm going to try to get one comment.
Yeah, well, it's actually the legal point, so.
Go ahead.
Or you like.
Go ahead.
So, you know, a lot, there's been a lot of commentary here about a specific property, and, you know, while this code affects all the properties in the borough, I think you got to be real careful about, you can't spot some, right? This plan, it's a 104-page document that covers the entire borough, and, um, you know, as we look for solutions to particular problems that residents raise, I caution folks, and with, particularly with the dialogue around that property, what we're trying to do is put in place a framework for conditional use that allows people to bring a plan, and then for, for the, for the planning commission and the council to evaluate whatever plans somebody brings, in whatever restricted box we allow them to bring those plans in, and subject it to quite a much lengthier list of conditions than we had before, with the ability to enforce against those conditions. And so as you think not just about this property, but the other properties that are governed by all conditional use, and that includes, you know, houses in some of the, some of the areas, subject to a much more limited set of conditional use, as well as the commercial and institutional buildings that are governed by still, I wouldn't call it blanket mixed use, I would call it like tea towel mixed use, still only a few things. Um, you've, you've got to consider, any plan that somebody brings for conditional use of property still has to comply with the zoning code. So I, let's take this particular property as an example.
It's bad.
What's a?
It's a.
No, but let's take it as an example, I've heard people say, you know, 110 employees and 100% office space if you, if you let it be office. I don't even know if that's necessarily the case, right? Because for us to really, for that to really be evaluated, you'd have to have a plan, you'd have to look at the plan and see if it's actually complying with the code. But for example, for any 700 square feet of office space, you have to have one onsite parking space. I'm not even sure, first of all, how many parking spaces you could get on that site because of restrictions on permeable, impermeable surface, and restrictions in the new code, not our current code, about setting things back to the second and third, parking back to the second and third tier on the lot. In addition, the new conditional use section, crikey, 124301, if you dig into the new stuff that's been added in B, um, there, the conditions you could put on any conditional use plans that come forward include, um, exterior changes to the building, appropriateness of exterior architectural features, structures, the effect of the proposed change upon the general historic and architectural nature of the property, which I don't.
Just remember, people that work in the borough, it's not that romantic, so.
That's true. And I guess if it helps you though, the thing that I hate in the code that I'm not going to make it my deal breaker, because there's no good in here, is these minimum parking requirements, and if folks are concerned about conditional use, there's a freebie from me to you, that like, it really boxes in the developer in, in, in conditional use. So bad for me, good for people who are concerned about mixed use development on conditional use.
In fact, Mr. President, I just did the calculation on a nine, let's say hypothetically, you have a 9,000-square-foot church, if you were going to make it 100% office, you would need 13 parking spaces. So actually, I don't think in any of the scenarios it was even possible to park that many cars, and then even with the new, uh, standards, it'd make even fewer. So that means anyone who would want to use a church building like that would have to, by necessity, create residential in order to park, provide for the required parking. So I'm kind of almost rethinking my.
Could you, could you go through that calculation in detail?
No, well, 90, 9,000 square feet divided by 700 is 13, so.
But the question is, you get a street allowance for your curving that takes up some of that.
One, one spot for every.
Credit, too.
Yeah, so you would get credit. I mean, that building's a perfect case, where there's a drawing for 11 spots.
But you can't put parking spaces in this code in the first lot, lot.
So there's fewer, even fewer onsite spaces.
So I think the previous plan showed 11 at maximum, so that it would be further reduced.
Yeah.
So it's just, I think your point's well taken, Charlie, is that there are other checks and balances against sort of just unbridled use and.
And even if, even if you allow it. Even if you could put onsite parking, if the planning commission said that's not consistent with the historical character of the property, yes, probably a decent level from the imposed condition that you can't do it. So, you know, there, there's a gift.
I have a question then, if you, if the, what is the purpose of making any part of that commercial if we can't be actualized? Why would we change it from what it is now?
Because it would allow people to bring a, a plan that's commercial, and if people actually like the plan, then it gives it a shot of giving a conditional use. If it's a plan that doesn't work, you can find ways to box it.
Right, not just specific property.
No, I agree with that, but it, but the point of the Form 8 code, to Bob's point, was to maintain the character of the neighborhoods that we have, and I think that it's been made abundantly clear here over the course of the discussion with this property, in whatever form we want to talk about it over this months now, is that many people object to changing that aspect of that neighborhood, not regardless of parking. So the question is, if, if it's so difficult, what is the, in terms of putting, pushing this forward, since most of us agree with many aspects of the Form 8 code, why would we add that in now? Why could we, why don't we just leave it alone? And then if we want to come back and do an overlay, for some reason, after a parking study or after any other thing, why not do it later?
Marley, in 30 years, if the people of the neighborhood look and say, gosh, there used to be a beautiful church here, why, why did they, why did they tear it down and put these four houses here? That's why we're talking about this.
I think, I think we are talking about all of it.
Yeah, we're talking about all of it, but I mean, we're talking about, we're also talking about an opportunity to allow a property owner who might have a building that doesn't blend itself perfectly to residential use entirely, to have the option of using it in a variety of different ways, and you get to sit in judgment of that, you get to vote and say, I approve of this plan or not, and you get to input, you get to give your input and say, I'd like to see this or that.
Marley, do you have a, like a, a language that would make you comfortable in terms of these properties?
I would, I would like to talk to the solicitor about that. I mean, I would mainly, what I would do is eliminate that part of the map, and I don't have the map in front of me, but leave it either the way it is now or.
Sorry, mic, mic dropped. Sorry, if you could repeat yourself.
Yeah, I would just try to eliminate that, the one change that has to do with that side of not looking at the map, I can't see it, but I would eliminate the commercial change on that, over that side of the bridge, for now, and come back and revisit it another time.
The entire green area?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's talk about that. That kind of shifts the conversation a little. Let's talk about that as, as an option, just eliminating the green area and converting it to amber. I get the sense that's, or converting it to yellow, since it's mostly apartment buildings right now. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, if it's apartment building.
Yellow.
Can you speak up or repeat? I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. We're all getting a little dry in the yellow. We will speak up.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
You know what, let's take a five-minute break. We'll be right back. 10 o'clock, it's been two hours. Everybody's been sitting every night. But I made a sharp cut.
Input from that.
Yeah, I agree back, we'll call them out. And I'm going to call on Council Cilio over this time.
So that kind of thing would be a showstopper for me?
Please, the microphone.
That, that kind of thing would be a showstopper for me, because if we start in committee, in council here, I, I think if we, if we change things around the margins, around the parameters of, of the code, that's one thing, based on our less informed input. The colors on the map are pretty central, uh, and the zones on the map are pretty central parts of the overall plan that were developed over a four-year period with hundreds of hours of public input and are heavily compromised based on a lot of public input over the years that we're not necessarily directly party to. And so I think once you start to change those kind of more fundamental things in the, in, that have been hammered out over a period of a lot of time, a lot of public input, with a lot less public input and maybe a less informed view as to why things ended up the way they did at that deeper level, uh, one, I think you run the risk of making some bad decisions, uh, in light of a lot of public feedback that came in to the process over time. Two, it really starts to open up a, a little bit of a slippery slope, like we're looking at a particular block, let's change the color there. That invites a lot more feedback right away to make those kind of like major structural changes on the north side, on the northwest side, elsewhere in the borough. That, you know, making those kind of like really deep fundamental changes to, I think, is already a heavily compromised document that is nowhere near as allowing of density and mixed use, uh, as, as I would like to see, but I think is a good starting point. That kind of thing would probably be a showstopper.
Sure. Charlie, we're, we're here to vote on, on this at some point. Planning commission's here to plan, they don't, they're not elected.
Right.
You know, we've never, you know, this is, I think it's absolutely our role, you might disagree with that place, but what is our role here versus something that's going to be built? I mean, we listen, we trust, we respect them, and they have a lot of reasons that we've, I think, all absorbed, why they think it's best. But at the same time, our role is to the residents, their role is to plan improperly, and, you know, they're thoughtful, caring people by all means, but, you know, I don't, I don't buy it that because we're suggesting, or Marley or I am suggesting a change to something that's significant, it's not, that, well, it's really not all that big what it comes down to, but that's what we're here to do. And, um, I don't, you know, I was just with somebody who was a secretary in one of the governor's cabinets, you know, I guess about 20 years ago, and he said, you know, the governor at the time told him, there's a big difference when you stand in front and ask people for your, the vote, and have the trust in you to take care of them than to be, you know, your staff or, or on an appointed position. And that's what we're here to do, so I, I don't buy that that we don't make. And that's what we're here to do. So, I don't buy that we don't make the change back. You don't like the change, you like the commercial, you like, that's a good reason to hold to it. But not because, you know, the planning commission gave it to us. There, you know, we trust them, we get a lot from them, but it doesn't mean that what they do is ultimately what we want for the residents. They're probably right, but it doesn't mean it's what we want.
I want to say to that point that a planner can take a look at a number of streets, two that I can think of off the top of my head, in the borough that don't go out like that. And a planner might take a look at it and say, "Hey, this would be a great idea if this went through. You could have this out or the other traffic pattern, it's so much easier to solve problems and check boxes." I think this plan, this Form 8 zoning checks a lot of boxes, checks a lot of things that people want to accomplish for mixed use and other things going forward in the borough. But at the same time, people have really made it very clear that they do not want some specific aspects to this plan to go forward. And if you shove that down their throat, I think it's a mistake. I think it is our job to take the recommendation of whoever it is and then balance that with what the absolutely clear concerns have been made. I think there's a lot in this code that has a lot of support that people here support, but there are some sticking points. I'm not, it is not okay to simply ignore that. And it's also not okay to tie it up with all the things that are acceptable and throw it all out together. We can separate this.
I'm going to go to Bob, and then I have some comments.
I feel like we're sort of having a conversation now about a process of what our role is and what our relationship is to our neighbors in the community. I don't know, that could get very complex to go down that, into that, to begin to debate what that is. I mean, you know, there are many neighbors, the same, you know, neighbors of the people who are absolutely dead set against doing anything that would allow the preservation, saving that church, who say to me, "Well, what about, it's not about us. We don't, we're just here temporarily." You know, most of the people who are ever going to live in Narberth are going to live here beyond our years. We've only been here 120 years or something, 140 years? There's going to be people in Narberth for the next 500 years. You know, this is just, or longer, hopefully. This is, we're just here for a bit. So, I personally, you know, I kind of think it's important that we salvage as many of the relative of the 19th, 18th century Pennsylvania that we can for those people in the future so they can maybe have a little bit of memory of what the life was like. But I, same time, I just think we need to stay focused though on the, you know. So, yes, we do represent people who live here, but some of the people who live here say, "Hey, think about the future. Think about the past, think about something beyond our time here." That's what I hear some of my constituents say to me. So, it's not all just kind of like, not in my backyard. It's not all I hear.
I think we addressed Bob's concerns about the other buildings in the green zone. And we have a plan, and I'm reading the eyes of the councilor sitting at the table in regards to the apartment buildings along South Narberth that could go either way. We had two ideas, one, you know. So, really, this entire document and this 11-year process is now tied to the fate of 198 Elmwood Avenue.
It is not. That's how it seems, but it is not.
All right, Councilor Tevill Mafa, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, I was going to yield to you, but it is not, it cannot. This entire document cannot be rested on one property. It is the entirety of the borough, it is entirety of parking, of business, of economic development, of the truth of who we are, how we are, what we do, how we do it, whether we live here for 10 years, 50 years, four years. And what it is, is absolutely a solid body of work that addresses the concerns of people who not just, in this moment, say, "No, thank you" to Elmwood Avenue, but it's the concerns of people who all along through this process have said, "We'd like to preserve these buildings." And not just those buildings, but have an opportunity to reuse them in a different way, should it be necessary. And should we be able to develop other parts of the community? Some residential streets, Montgomery Avenue, take a different look at Havreford Avenue, take a different look. And actually, to Charlie's note, which I felt differently until he explained it, having those craftsmen and those kinds of ideas back in the borough. Someone on my street used to make cabinets and they're gone. I mean, you know, their property is still there, but it's, you know, the people who live there said, "Oh, there was a cabinet maker." And so, it's not, it cannot rest on one property. I will not, that is a deal breaker for me. This entirety of the code cannot rest on one property. It cannot.
We're going to go through the same process. We're going to have two or three people object, three or four people vote yay, and the mayor probably will veto it. And we'll go back to wasting a lot of time for a lot of people as opposed to coming up with a compromise that we're close on. We're actually not that far in a compromise on this thing. So, you know, I'm not as strong as Marley on no mixed use. I'm just strong on tamed, you know.
So, in terms of process to move forward, do you, I'm going to read your eyes, feel like that's something we can hash out here tonight? Or do you think that's something where we should go back? We can speak with the solicitor, we can discuss some of these details as to what a compromise regarding these civic institutional buildings would look like? And it's a compromise that, you know, ultimately rests on the votes of the council.
I think we get our professional planner, our solicitor, in the same room, and then...
How long do you anticipate that to take? Because that's really the crux for me in holding up. There could be a house purchase tomorrow that will be torn down and turned into something we don't like because we can't make a decision here now.
I think we can do it in the next two weeks, find a solo evening, so it's a public meeting. And, you know, have it as a building zoning meeting, have it as an extra session of council.
We can have a special meeting of council.
What will we accomplish?
We would accomplish some sort of compromise regarding the uses of civic institutional buildings that are going to be converted in some fashion that would achieve a supermajority of council.
And what fact, what new fact are we looking for? What new conclusion or idea are we hoping to learn?
Well, I think, so I think there is some... And one of them is a, maybe perhaps, a detailed build-out scenario for these institutional ones under the Form 8 code. Because what we had spent many months discussing was what that would look like under our existing code at ordinance 984, 964 and 985. But what we didn't do was how the Form 8 code changes that. A lot of the discussion that we had is really based around parking. And it was because part, like as I mentioned, for those of you who were here Monday night, under the existing code, parking is the only hammer that we have to constrain there. Because we don't have Form 8 standards and we don't have all these other components and restrictions on lots, setbacks, et cetera. But we haven't done that yet under the Form 8 code. And perhaps if we do that analysis for all of the civic institutional buildings, because I think it's very disingenuous just to do it on this property, that some people who are concerned may become less concerned and may feel that the use with certain limitations would be constrained enough that it's something that they could accept. Bob, does that jive with you? Marley?
False data for me, I can't speak more.
I think we need some data.
I'm okay with that. I fear that we'll lose the, I fear that we'll lose the Elmwood Avenue Church in the meantime.
Well, you said it's already demolished anyhow.
That's what I fear.
I fear that as well. I think we all do. I don't think there's anyone in this room that wants to see that building disappear. But we all do have very different opinions about what should be in it and what the effects on the community would be of that future use.
I think... I'd also note that we had a compromise solution for conditional use of civic and institutional buildings in ordinance 984 that had the support of the majority of council and didn't have the support of the supermajority as a standalone document. But I think possibly with more information available to the public about what the current code, proposed code would allow the zoning, sorry, the planning commission and the council to do and impose the limits on plans, that people may take a different view when considering that conditional use, ordinance, conditional use section of this code on its own and in the context of a much broader document that does a lot of good things at the same time.
I want to answer Mr. Redfright's comment.
Okay, and then I just, I would like to get through our next two committees and get to public comment very shortly.
I want Mr. Metrick to correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that the owner of the Elmwood Avenue Church has filed for a demolition permit and that permit was rejected, denied by Yerkes. He now has a certain period of time to meet Yerkes' standards or to reapply for demolition. So, I'm not sure how long that's going to take him. And so, if it takes him two months, then we're in great shape. We'll hopefully, you know, under this idea of which, if it doesn't, we may, we may run out of time while he's getting his approvals. So, just, I just feel that needs to be said. I know this is not about that one building, but I do hope that we'll be able to give that particular property a second chance to survive. And because, and because we authorized it the first time, I think we made the right decision then. And I think we would be making the right decision this time as well to enable the adaptive reuse of that building.
Okay. Okay. Let's close the discussion on the Form 8 zoning code for now. I think I'm going to ask the office to work with our planner to flesh out what the Form 8 code build-outs would look like under a variety of scenarios of commercial use, 100%, 50%. If anybody has other tweaks or suggestions of compromise situations they'd like to see, I'm not going to ask them to do 1,000 scenarios, but we'll try and whittle it down to the most substantive ones.
And just to clarify, even though the current draft says 100% office, I think the planning commission clarified to us offline that...
Do you want to take 100% off the table?
Not really, but I'm trying to get things done here. Let's see the building, yeah, let's see the building anyway and see if it's any different from 50%.
And Marley has another tweak.
What would it look like if it was changed to amber on that side? Because you were saying that that would be some massive problem, but maybe it's not.
All right, well, those are three scenarios. Let's take a look at the data. Let's promise ourselves that we can make a decision with that data and we don't need to get more data. Because we need to make a decision because there are many, many facets of this community that are hinging in a very time-sensitive manner on our actions.
North Essex Avenue and Sabine Avenue is in play. And should that stone building come down, I'm telling you, I'm not going to be happy.
And I have...
Discuss it later.
We will move forward with all due speed. I am asking each council member that wants to have this data to make this schedule available for special meetings, which I will schedule and the borough will pay to advertise. And we will communicate with the public to when most may be. Economic Development Committee, Councilor Richmond.
We have the leprechaun hunt this Saturday.
Leprechaun hunt, everyone. Changing gears.
We discussed parklets and we discussed timing that with First Friday in May, which is the opening of Narbarth Month, and also with the Inside Out program starting nightly. So, we're going to, Ed is going to discuss with businesses who might want to start the first parklet. We also talked about having an open street Sunday correspond with our mayor's open house, is it called?
Welcome back.
Welcome back, which the idea came from the Pope's visit and the streets were closed and Philadelphia now has an open streets thing and it encourages, you know, people, neighbors meeting neighbors and walking through the streets. So, we're going to look into doing that and finding, we're thinking of Sunday, which would be the day that would cause the least trouble for the businesses. Again, Ed is going to check that out, see how that would work. And I think, oh, we also discussed bringing a parklet back with the farm guy who was here last year or somebody else who might want to have a farm stand. We discussed blue lighting for our streetlights, raised speed bumps, and is that it?
All right.
Sorry, blue lighting for the streetlights?
Yes.
Next meeting?
Yes. We didn't say, I'll let you know.
Okay. Ad hoc succession planning, any news?
Nothing to report.
Informational was asked by the Civic Association to say that there is this book, The Citizen Bill, How to Take Your Town Square Digital and Reintegrate Government. It's a good book. Everybody likes it. There's copies here if you want to buy them. They're available at the library. And see Georgette or, see Georgette.
Richard.
Is Richard still here?
No.
Right, so see Georgette. Thank you. Public comment. This microphone? Come on down. I'll do it by show of hands because I think, and I'm going to put a three-minute time limit. And I start, thank you.
Can I ask a question first?
Go ahead.
Okay. With the conditional use of the church, since you're just talking about it, I just want to make sure I ask. The owner doesn't have, she doesn't have to accept that conditional use, right? He could tear it down anyway. So, I just want to point out that if the zoning is more inclusive than the conditional use, then there's more incentive to tear it down if you want to have a business in there than there is to have conditional use in the church. I just want to point that out. If the zoning were changed to residential on that block?
No, I think if the church comes down, the availability for commercial use in that space no longer exists. It can only exist as long as that building is there. And also, if he were to accept the conditional use, the facility easement would be in perpetuity. So, that building could never be torn down.
We want him to save facilities, so we create an incentive for him to save it.
But if he were to demolish it, he cannot do it.
Because if the building were to be torn down, then that property would be the same zone, the same as the rest of the block.
It would.
It is.
Not that green?
That community does not permit commercial use in anything other than a civic institutional building that is being reused.
Or a pre-1930s building. On a certain size block, on a very large block.
So, I'm in favor of changing that zoning to residential on the block. But I want to point out that in all of the, in the green, yellow and amber zones, the density has dramatically increased from what it is right now. I mean, the lowest zoning, it's dramatically increased. And it separates all those zones from the red zone quite a bit more than it is, than they are now. And so, I'm very concerned about that because I feel that that opens up a lot of more incentives for tear downs because there's more incentive for someone to come in and take down what's there. And I'll just use an example of the yellow zone. And specifically, I'll stick to South Narberth Avenue since you mentioned it. The zoning was changed in 1955, the last time it was changed, to not allow apartment buildings, or at least to the present zoning. And so, no apartment buildings, I believe, have been built since then. They look older to me and I think there was a reason for that, which is probably the overgrowth of apartments. And I realize that any apartment buildings that would be built now would be not as large and, you know, I've seen the setbacks and I understand that. But I do see a threefold problem with this yellow zoning there. First, the zoning creates a new financial incentive for developers to tear down the older homes. And one of this, I feel this is contrary to the Form 8 code's stated purpose of incentivizing the rehabilitation of existing structures. And I care just as much about old houses as I do about old churches. I care a lot about all of them. And secondly, as the ratio of apartment houses to private homes increases, and that's just full property's maximum, okay? But I still feel this is true, the nature of the streetscape changes and it becomes less appealing for homeowners. And then, the third thing is that the, that there is very little incentive under the present code to push the density to the limit in the yellow and the amber zones. But with the Form 8 code, I think... But with the Form-Based code, I think that the maximum actual density will increase because, because of this opportunity for development. And I think we need a variety of housing to keep our community viable, but I'd like to see the balance of the apartment buildings to private homes stay the way they are now. And so, I would suggest that we create another zone, which is closer to either keep, keep the yellow and amber zones kind of the density they are now, and create another zone that's kind of before green. Or go the other way, keep the zoning the way you have it in the proposed code, and create another zone that's sort of bright orange and red, between red and amber. So that you, and then, and move some of that density out of there, because I don't think the people, I know that the people, most of the people don't want that much density. And that would eliminate the apartment houses on South Narberth. Then you could create, have the yellow zone limited to right next to the train station and the apartment that's there now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment?
I just wanted to say a quick thing.
Go ahead. Come on, if you could say your, state your name and address again, just for the recording.
What did you say?
If you could state your name and address.
Dillon Road, 25 Narberth Park.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say a few general things. As you can tell, I came from England. And I have to say that Narberth is more of a village than the village I lived in in England. It's a perfect little place. It's a unique little place. And when you talk to anybody, the moment you mention Narberth, they kind of warm up and say, "Ah, Narberth." It's an oasis here. And I would say that I don't think anybody should be in a hurry to change zoning in any kind of a blanket form. That's what I'm saying. I think that each development that somebody proposes needs to be looked at individually. No matter where you drive from here, you won't find another, another Narberth. You will find a lot of villages that used to be villages that somehow, over the years, through commercial interests, through contractors, through entrepreneurs, they have changed. Whether you drive, you know, along Citeline Avenue, whether you drive down Lancaster Pike, whether you go into New Jersey. This is an exceptional village. It's mostly residential. It has a very definite center. It has a wonderful recreational area. And I just worry that, as this lady just said, if you start getting tear downs and you start getting apartment places in exchange for the tear downs, it's going to change Narberth. With some notable exceptions, apartment complex, and some notable exceptions, some are really nice. But in most cases, they're somehow aloof, they're somehow removed just by the fact of their design. Where you go in, and you go inside, and you go upstairs, and you're in your, you're not experiencing, you're not part of the community as a single-family homeowner is. You're not. That's all. And if there were more of those blocks in Narberth, instead of houses, Narberth will have changed. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Rick Trellis, 123 Woodside Avenue. Aside from being a tree guy, I'm also a planner. And while I don't disagree with Alex and Peter's comments, I have sort of a technical comment. I see an issue with the suggestion of just eliminating apartments along South Narberth Avenue. There are apartments at either end. So, right now, right now, we're, there's a chance that a developer could buy those projects, ask for rezoning, get denied, and then sue the borough, because there's precedent for apartments. If that happens, and a developer is able to build apartments, then they would probably have a lot more freedom to build what they want, to build more of what's there. Our, the new Form-Based code has sort of a sliding scale on impervious surfaces. When you aggregate more land, you don't get to build more necessarily. It's sort of, the more land you aggregate, the less efficient it is. I think that was done really beautifully. I think that the Form-Based code actually protects better than not allowing apartments at all. And I think that's something, it's a question for the solicitor, but I think it's a really important detail to look at. Also, I, I actually do disagree with Peter a little bit about apartments and community, because we have to remember also, this is a really hot real estate market. There are a lot of families that move into apartments here while they're trying to get a house. My mother-in-law lives in an apartment, and she helps us take care of our kids. And I know other families that have that situation too. So, she's, I think we should not just sort of talk about the apartments as not part of the community, because they can be. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone who would like to speak, if you would raise your hands, just so I can get a sense of you. Okay. So, I'm actually gonna start in this corner, and I'm gonna work my way row by row. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lily. Can I turn the mic like this? Because I feel like I'm gonna.
Generally, I would prefer you press council rather than the audience.
Here, for all of us. My name is Sue Witty. I live at 414 Dudley Avenue. My husband is a third-generation Narberth resident. And we've lived in our house for 35 years, actually 30, almost 36 years. It was his grandparents' house. So, we're from that old Narberth group. I think it was good to hear Bob speak about keeping those, you know, businesses and everything, and people who support that, because that's certainly the Narberth that our family has grown up with. We've probably recently had about 30 people come up to us to give their condolences to us, because we live right next to 418 Dudley, if you guys, everybody knows, is one of the rare houses. We, I didn't have curtains in my windows because of the thoughtful design of all of those homes on that side of the, of the block for 35 years, because there are two windows, and the distance, all the houses were offset to the side, to the right side. So, I, we had trees there, and those didn't need for a curtain. Now, I feel like we live in a twin, and we have a house that's 10 feet from us. We look out our window directly into a bunch of windows in the house. We have had water in our basement three times now in places we have never had water. That was our concern. We were at Borough Hall on the first morning that we, you know, that the contractor that Rayar started demolishing a tree out front with a big piece of equipment, not with a chainsaw like my husband does, but with a big piece of equipment, crunching it. And by the way, the borough gave no one in the neighborhood any notice that this was going to happen, which, you know, I am an issue with. But I'm here because that happened to us. The horse is out of the barn. We can't do anything. We just have to figure out how to live with that. But I don't want this to happen to any, anywhere else in Narberth in this way. Because the design is poor, the construction is poor, the whole drainage situation is poor. You know, it's looms over all the other houses on the block. And I could go on and on. So, please, I have tried to study this code, and I appreciate all the information I've gotten from everyone in the last, Monday night and tonight, because I'm learning more and more about it. But my issue is, like, do something now, so that this does not happen anywhere else in Narberth. And even if it's adopting the part of the code that protects against, you know, it's not the tear down that's the problem. It's like, who's tearing it down, and what are they doing it for? Sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Coming around, there's no one in first row. There's Allison. Nothing. Second row. Okay, third row, Mr. Dubois, row?
Wait, second, I was counting the empty.
Yeah, I'm counting the empty rows. I'm a computer scientist.
Oh, that's great.
Counting zero, that's right.
So.
Georgette Dubois.
Georgette Dubois, 111 Perry Avenue. Thank you for the reminder, yes. What I'm gonna read into the record is my response to a request from the Planning Commission that I received. So, I'm gonna read that first, because otherwise, this is not gonna make a lot of sense. So, this is, this was sent on February 15th to me, and reads, "Georgette, you have a polemic style that's been effective over the last couple of years at encouraging the council to operate in the spirit of openness that we all desire. The current council reflects a different attitude about transparency than would have been observed just a few years ago, and you certainly deserve some of the credit for this. But at the council meeting of February 3rd, you included in your remarks an allegation that unspecified members of the Narberth Planning Commission had somehow benefited financially from their positions and from votes that have been taken on matters officially before them or had voted in such a way as to intentionally benefit others. A verbatim transcription of your remarks included the following obtained through a right-to-know request." So, this is a quote of what I said at that meeting. "I have a really meta-question about how it's determined who's on the Planning Commission when it appears that currently there are people on the commission, people who have been on, and people have been on the commission, who benefit financially from decisions that are made about things like that." And I was referring to the quarter-million-dollar tariffs that's gonna be built on the library. It's more than that, but that was what contractors did, it's around that. About things like that, and other things as well, property owners and all. So, I don't know who looks at that and says, "Okay, what are these people doing on a Planning Commission where their votes can benefit, if not themselves, if they recuse themselves, can benefit their buddies?" So, I think that's really important, and I'm hearing a lot of people ask questions with regard to that. And then, the rest of the letter from Jim Cornwell reads, "These are serious allegations with no basis in fact that I know of. When spoken in public and in the presence of the press, and later disseminated in a video post on Facebook, they assault the reputations of all of us who have spent lifetimes establishing and maintaining sterling reputations in our professional, civic, and personal lives. Uncruven, your words are slanderous. In actuality, the Planning Commission has been careful to avoid conflicts of interest and has been scrupulous in observance of recusals whenever there might be the slightest perception of self-interest. No backroom dealing, no preferential treatment for buddies. Accordingly, I ask on behalf of all seven Planning Commission members that you either substantiate your allegations with demonstrable fact or then retract them at the next public meeting of Borough Council, the caucus meeting on Wednesday, March 9th." So, this is my response. Dear Jim and members of the Planning Commission, I am responding to Jim Cornwell's email requesting on behalf of the Planning Commission. I'm gonna abbreviate that as PC. It's just working.
We're coming to the end.
Okay, well, I'm gonna read through my response. Thank you. Yeah. Then I, okay. Requesting on behalf of the PC that I retract my comment and question me to the February 3rd meeting. Fortunately, you have a transcript and a video recording of that meeting in which you perceive that I was making quotes, laying to his allegations. And so, here's, then I just have in there what I actually said. To quote Jim, "In the spirit of openness that we all desire, it would be very helpful for the PC to clarify for the public the professional fees, if any, that have been paid to PC members during the time they have served or will be paid to them for planned or proposed projects. I realize that this is public information which any resident can request, but it may be most effective for the PC to demonstrate how it, quote, "has been careful to avoid conflicts of interest and has been scrupulous in observance of recusals whenever there might be the slightest perception of self-interest." End quote. "As we enter this new era of communicative and transparent government in Narberth, I ask that you share this information to help educate all of us about the important workings of the Planning Commission to which you have devoted innumerable hours of time and expertise. With respect and appreciation, Georgette Dubois." And I have a response from Jim, but I'm not gonna read that, because Jim wants to share his response with the meeting. You can do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Point of order, council. I feel as though we just allowed a person to double down on their slander. And, and I just would like to make that a point of order for the record, that we allowed that to happen again. And, and I object to that.
I'm not sure that that's a point of order.
Well, it is a point of order for a person. If I had interrupted her, it would have been a point of order. But I chose to wait until, so I would not interrupt her to say that I believe we just observed one resident at the borough, again, slander another resident at the borough, a volunteer resident at the borough. And I just want to make that plain for everyone who's listening, that that just happened here.
Who's the next person to speak? Come on.
Robin Burnholtz, 212 Marion Avenue. So, we're nearly ready, you guys are nearly ready to vote on the Form-Based code, certainly relative to how long we've been dealing with it. But it comes at a time when developers have a lot of interest in Narberth because of real estate values. Development may come a whole lot faster than we think it will. So, I think it really is important to do what we can upfront that the majority thinks is correct. Likewise, Alex had mentioned developers' interest in tear downs to build apartment houses. And this could be anywhere in Narberth, that new apartments are allowed within the code. I think it also gives homeowners a great deal of incentive to sell, to developers, by combining lots, because surely it would be more financially worthwhile than it is to sell as a single-family home. So, I feel like that should be considered. And I just wanted to say, and this is speaking to Ms. Moffin, that I don't think what we've been talking about tonight is about 190. I think it's, that's what we're up against right now. But it will apply to several other civic institutional buildings. So, I think spot zoning right now isn't where we are. We're talking about more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very quickly, I would like to throw support for the idea of enclosed porches. I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and Jim Spears encouraged that we install value for having families. I had one, and he lived on Main Street Lane. My parents have had use when they lived on Essex Avenue. And I think these, and I spoke about that at the meeting, and Hadi Boise suggested guidelines on transparency. None of those suggestions made into Jim Cornwell's letter when he sent the letter to council. So, I'm glad to hear their support for enclosed porches. I think there is a solution to the path of the code right now. I support Sue Witty's talk about tear downs. And as a friend, a longtime friend, and also my long-term residency of Narberth, I think it's important that we have to prevent that. And when you hear the problems that she's having with floods in the basement and her loss of privacy, when we allow tear downs for apartment buildings, the same thing will happen. You can't tear down lovely single homes and put up apartment buildings that are flat roofed with a limit, with a no limit on units and think that they're not going to have an impact on the houses that surround them. So, what I suggest is let's put through the Form-Based zoning code, but hold back on the Elmwood Avenue by green, and also the green on the block of the Narberth Presbyterian Churches. Excuse me. And then, hold back on the yellow. It's not just South Narberth Avenue. It's North Narberth Avenue, and it's North Essex. It's not just South Norworth Avenue, it's North Norworth Avenue and it's North Essex Avenue. And there are a lot of properties along that those roofs that could be broken down for apartments. And then do the necessary studies, so that we can really see what the impact is on population, parking, congestion, and infrastructure, and see why, how they will impact the surrounding houses. We need to have, we do the build-out study, I suggest that you also do it for residential at the Elmwood Avenue Church, because Mac Brand is very interested in buying that property, and she wants to put four condos with underground parking there. And that is certainly a simple solution. And as far as the demolition of the church goes, Mr. Gordon is a lawyer, and he also is a seasoned developer. He owns now a Royal Bank, he's looking to buy properties along Montgomery Avenue, he owns some presidential units to Ben &amp; Jerry's. He knows what he's doing. When he puts in a demolition application, and it is incomplete because he has not submitted any of the proper documents. So if he was really serious about getting his demolition as soon as possible, he would've put in a proper application. And he also, with his application, didn't mention that he wanted to reserve his right of conditional use. So I think we can take this pattern, that if we don't quick get through this zoning on Elmwood Avenue and South Norworth Avenue, they were gonna lose the church.
Thank you.
Quarter reporter for Dean Conway Avenue. I know there are letters that have been sent in, so are those gonna be read tonight?
I was gonna do them at the end.
Lovely.
I have letters from you, do you want me to?
No. Let's try and read it.
I wanna slide.
That's great. I just, I learned something Monday that makes it even more imperative in my mind that you act quickly. I can see Sue's neighbor from my backyard, it is huge, it is ugly, it's not in character of Norworth.
No, that's...
What I'm seeing now, though...
You mean the house, right?
The house. I'm sorry. The house. It's gigantic. I'm picturing it in my head, and it's just so... I guess it kind of stuns me still. But now what I learned is that, I live in the 400 block of Conway, across the street from me to the west, behind those homes, is a large property that has this, what used to be a shed for racetrack stuff back in the day when there was a racetrack in the area, has apartments in it. That's probably sold. There's a house then at the foot of price, has been sold, you can see that on Montgomery County listings, bought by a holding company that is not a person wanting to live in that house. I'm betting they're trying to buy that as a property. We are facing probably a major development in there, and I am, I'm gonna say, so downhill from that, we are not happy about that happening under the current code. We want the new code in as soon as possible. And as much as people are concerned about what might happen over the next years, we're seeing stuff that's gonna happen over the next months. So we need action right away, and then you can spend time fixing whatever might need to be fixed over the next year. But please, don't delay this.
I'm just reading in at 227 Hampton Avenue. I wanna think about the heart of Norworth, which centers around the tracks, because there's a logic to those colors, being away from the tracks. It's really too bad that the Baptist congregation went into decline and abandoned those church buildings on Elmwood, because if it had, then our town would've benefited from having another choice of preschool, maybe, another location for concerts, fairs, after-school activities, and community meetings, much closer to downtown than any of the other churches that currently provide those services. I think it's also too bad that the tracks are seen as a dividing line rather than a united line. To think of them as dividing our town, as marking off a different character of neighborhood, goes against the history of our town's development. Before Norworth was incorporated, there were two villages here. One called Elm, thus Elmwood, which included the tracks, both directions, the train station, and the area that extends to Rockland, Windwood, and all the way east to Montgomery Avenue, which is Marion Avenue. And there was a newer little village of Norworth, which was laid out from Ione to Conway between Havilord and Windsor. When residents sought to be able to provide better municipal services and petitions to incorporate as a borough, people on the south side of the tracks did not wish to be included in the new borough. Judge Aaron Schwartz of Montgomery County rejected the petition for borough status on the basis that this was one community centered on the tracks, and he could not approve the incorporation of only one part of it. He said he would approve the petition only if it included what he called a entire community. That was in 1893. In January of 1895, he approved the new petition, but in the meantime, because of various debates and appeals about boundary lines, that whole section extending along Havilord and Montgomery Avenue was lost. So, to repeat, our town was founded on the very basis of being united around the tracks, not divided by them. We are one town, not two towns. And if there's a lesson, it is that we might lose something if we drag appeals for too long.
Jim Spears, 211, really. I have enjoyed the discussion tonight. I think it's been really good. I think awful comments, and then good, very good so far, and I would like that we have a clear picture of what it's gonna take to pass this code. I'm very strong on a picture of this code. I would like to see it passed as soon as possible, as soon as there can be compromise. There obviously could be some changes, I think it's pretty apparent what they are. So I wanna thank you for the good discussion. As far as the Elmwood Church goes, which is, seems to be the most sticking point, a build-out scenario, brilliant idea, because I think it's gonna show. You can hardly park anything on that lot as it is, you have to park in the second lot there. I doubt you could even get to 50% office use under the Form Based Code. So, I think that would be very illuminating to see that. I encourage it, and it's gonna get us to our new table. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna start around the right of the row behind Georgia, Mr. Bren Delicia, do you want to speak?
Yes. Good evening, Frank Bren Delicia, 314 North Essex. Aaron, I appreciate you setting up those public meetings, Monday's meeting, and also for tomorrow night. With regards to the Form Based Zoning Code, I would support a phased approach to that as David Schonhardt had recommended in terms of doing the buildings in all the form, but in terms of the rezoning and parking studies to delay that. I am concerned with the parking regulations in the Form Based Zoning Code, where the requirement drops from two spaces for dwelling to only one space for dwelling for off-street parking, sorry, it says in the current code. So for conversion to a three-family unit, we only require three parking spots, where instead you have six parking spots required now. On Essex Avenue, where I live, I can speak to that, in Price and Woodbine, parking is very tight, there's many times that I'll have to actually go park around a corner because I can't find the parking spots in front there. I am grateful that at least the conversion of the United Methodist Church, that that, under today's code, the parking had all onsite parking developed there, because on the street, if any of that, if you cut that in half, where you have now 12 units, and most people have, you know, two cars per house, we happen to be fortunate that we only have one trying to find parking spot, that if there wasn't enough parking onsite, that that could be on the street. So, also with regards to changing the zoning along with Essex to a 3C mixed residential, that allowed for greater density to, in the current coding. I mean, I understand the long term, as we're talking about like over 30 years increased density. Well, I mean, we have immediate increased density, what we had, that unit we were told was never gonna be sold or whatever, but it was sold, it got converted to 12 units went in there. So you have increased density immediately impacting the neighbors, even now changing my walks in the morning with my dog and the other people that have dogs, not even fully all the units sold there. And nothing against the people that live there, it's just the impact there, if they have company over that's in the parking. So you do see some immediate impact in terms of that. So really, in terms of trying to get more parking, if that is allowed to, if the zoning allows for even larger properties on there, would make it more of a challenge for parking on that street. With regards to the definition of accessory buildings such as a garage, currently it states in there that it can have a footprint as large as the main house on the property, which concerns me. I understand that the height went from 35 to 16, which I appreciate, and even if you look at the Holden Garage that was built, it's about 20 feet, so it'd probably be four feet lower, thank you. But it still doesn't prevent the entire backyard, what we're talking about three feet away from your property, of taking that up. Just a quick question. David Schonhardt had submitted a question, if you could clarify if individual property owners can opt out of the Form Based Zoning Code, re-districting, remapping zoning initiative for the MPC, the Municipal Planning Code, in section 7 of 6.4. Individual property owners can opt out of zoning initiatives that affect their own property, but not those that affect the community. Please clarify if this is allowed, if so, clarify the nature of a formal signed letter from the individual property owners. Because I was curious if that would also state to the property owner if they were wrong. If somebody...
I can tell you, I did review that question with the solicitor, and the answer was no. And I would be happy to provide you with more detail on that.
Okay, thank you.
Who's next?
Kimberly Beback, 237 W. Avenue. First, I want to thank each of you for your time. It's a thankless job, and I don't think people say thank you enough. The time that you put into this is amazing. Secondly, what Katie Seem said was amazing too, I could never articulate it that well, but that was really powerful. My husband and I moved to Norworth about a year and a half ago, with our then-two-year-old and daughter on the way. In this first month, after we welcomed our second child, who is a tree-hard, Alexa, we spent many days walking around and exploring around the town. We were excited to confirm we could absolutely pick the best place to lay down roots and raise our children. The local feel and energy of Norworth felt familiar. It was everything we liked about each place that we had lived, all wrapped up into one cozy, perfect package. During the spring of 2015, we received a mailing of a special borough-wide newsletter regarding the Form Based Code. It was new to us, we had no idea it was in the works. So we spent time carefully reading the document, and we attended the numerous inquest sessions last year. We were impressed with the years of planning and resources invested in meticulously developing the draft that we have here today. And we walked away feeling relief that a new code was on the horizon that would protect what makes Norworth special. Then May got here, and two houses were demolished that were quintessential Norworth homes. One is the home right next to Sue. The other was a cute bunklot on North Norworth. And subsequently, this mid-mansion boulot has started here in Norworth, it's really alarming. And it was May, my husband, and I realized how vulnerable Norworth is under our current updated code. It's painful to see the upscale houses going up, that forever destroys streetscapes and put Norworth's charm in jeopardy. Sorry, I haven't, we have a time limit.
Yep, you're good.
We appreciate the Form Based Code's conservative, thoughtful, respectful approach to defining the just right fit for Norworth. And we're excited, my husband and I, about the manner in which the Form Based Code encourages this transit-oriented approach to the zones with where apartments are gonna be allowed. If they were at the Red Zone, much further from the transit, that would alarm me, because it would kind of bind to that car culture. What the borough's solicitor stated at a meeting last year really resonated with me. He said there will never be a perfect draft to deliver to council for consideration, and it's important to please keep this in mind. The best way to figure out how the code may need to be perfected to fit in Norworth is to pass it and put it into use. With that said, I would like to state that my husband and I fully support this current draft of the Form Based Code, and we are ready to see it adopted as soon as possible, just to what we heard earlier with these possible pending demolitions, it's very alarming. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be moving forward. Michelle Van Almsen, 211, right now, I'm just gonna concur with what Kim, and Rick, and Jim, and Katie, and Barbara have said. I don't wanna repeat everything again, I think that they fully expressed my thoughts. Generally, the only thing I would add is, and it seems to me that there's no option on the table to keep our current zoning. So, I'm hearing everybody saying, "Oh, let's keep the current zoning code." I think we all agree, it doesn't, it's done. Do the job we need to protect our communities. So, I haven't heard anyone in council suggest the idea of adopting the Form Based Code in phases. Mr. Bren Delicia did. I just wanted to say, I think it would be a pretty complicated and difficult thing to do. It sounds easy to block off part of the Form Based Code and grab the ones that we have, but I think it would get really, really difficult in practice. So I would, I wouldn't support the approach. It sounds to me as if there's only a couple of real sticking points or deal killers on the table for council right now, and they both seem to be mainly on the south side. So as a south sider to say, I'm perfectly happy with the draft as it exists, I would be fine with it. If there needs to be some, something worked out, you know, to make one person, you know, feel comfortable voting for it, you know, I think doing the work that Jay's, you know, can come to that agreement. I don't think the south side, and oddly enough, if, you can see in the zoning map, we have north, north of the tracks, all different colors, and it's just here, this and this, so I'll just be like amber if we did what we talked about tonight. And I don't see where our live is being that different or separate, just because of the existence of the train tracks. So, I mean, I do feel that there are areas that are much more mixed, much more active for the Norworth Avenue corridor, and with respect to the green and the church, I just wanna echo what Councilwoman Silas said, I think that the best approach is to leave a broader possible scope of uses, to be, conditional use to be broad, but really the teeth in the conditions the council reserves, you know, at the approval stage. But because, it's very hard to think, I mean, we consider, oh, 100% office, that's gonna mean all kinds of horrible things in parking, or 100% commercial, but who knows what plans that maybe they have that would make 100% use of that building, preserve that building, that would actually almost know car traffic, and would be a very light use. We don't know that, so why would we run that out in advance? Why not put the teeth in the conditions, and leave the range of possible conditional uses a little bit broader? So, thanks.
Thank you.
Nora Walsh, Norworth Avenue, County of Norworth, and I totally agree, we are one I'm very much for passing the Form Based Zoning Code, but I do not understand why we're here discussing the Elmwood Baptist Church again. We just went through so much effort and energy, the council, as well as the residents in Norworth, and that was defeated. And we should not be here discussing again whether that's gonna be 100% rental or residential, or it's going to be commercial. I very much favor scaling back the uses, letting it be how it is now, and moving slowly to change our, change South Norworth Avenue and that section of Elmwood Avenue. Putting back to what it was, pass the zoning code, and then move slowly and make changes if you want. Oh, I had already, I had also noticed what it said about home-based businesses, and I thought, even, you know, not in terms of people coming in and out of the home, but people have businesses where they work via computer, open the internet with people. but people have businesses where they work via computer, open the internet with people, and that should be allowed. But the way it is phrased right now, it would seem to cut that out. So maybe if you just add language that maybe you shouldn't have employees other than family working in the home, that would take care of Bob's problem with lots of people coming to our house, but it would allow people to employ other people. And that's the way businesses work now. I have a wraparound porch. I very much think that we should be allowed to enclose our porch as we want. I certainly wouldn't want to enclose most of my porch, but if I wanted to enclose a small piece of it, especially with classes to look out, I wouldn't be able to do that. That would allow me to enjoy it more than, you know, to implement it when it's not warm out. I just have a question. I don't understand the process. You don't have to answer it, but I'll throw it out there. In the conditional use procedure, I do see how there's a process for appeal. I didn't see written in there that the mayor would still have the power to veto. I don't know if that's where that's written or it's someplace else, but I wondered that because everything else seemed to be in there. I wondered about having non-conditional use applications posted on the borough's website so that other people can see them, residents can see them. Notice that the public hearing date should be posted on the borough's website. And there's specific places that these are listed as being posted. Websites where we all want. So I think that would be very helpful. Page 69, Article 9, Section, Subsection C, same thing. Public notices of the hearing date should be posted on the borough websites so we can see them. I don't know how it's written now in the code, but I also thought on page 72 it talks about people being in violation of a section of zoning code and getting into the magisterial district. Sorry about that. Then they have to enter these keys. You know, magisterial district, it's pretty low. I don't think some corners should be stuck with ten enteries unless you have it. And my last point is with the definition on page 80, I guess it was for offices. I don't know what certain professional operations means in that definition. I think that phrase should be taken out unless you figure out what it means and put that someplace. There's a phrase in there that says operation of similar character. I think that's sufficient to cover that phrase.
Thank you.
And moving on to the right, I don't see a lot. Coming back into Mr. Brower's room. Yes, Mr. Presley.
Good evening. I'm Tom Presley. I live at 300 North Essex. I'm a member of the Planning Commission. First of all, I would like to thank Council President Munrick for the presentation you gave the other day. It was a very, very good gesture to make that information available. Very effective, I thought, and an important thing to do. And also like to thank the council members for the discussion tonight. I was very heartened by it. It was a very good conversation about, and drilled down very quickly to the key issues that need to be resolved. And I think there's been a lot of noise about this over the past few months, but I think it was a really great constructive conversation. So I thank you all for that. It also pointed out to me that we're this close. We're really this close. Everyone here knows, but it needs to be said, our zoning code that we have now is badly broken. It is what is contributing to what we're seeing and what everyone is concerned about. Someone wrote, well, let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater. Folks, we have no baby. All we have is bathwater. We have to replace it. We have to replace it. It may not be perfect. As the solicitor said, no code like this ever is. We need to keep working at it, but we have to act now. The urgency of doing this is upon us. And I hope really that the goalpost won't move. I hope that we will not get the findings of the research on the civic institutional properties and enemy more information, or more information, or more information. You were already this close on the ordinance, that, on overriding the ordinance. You were this close. With a little more time, you could have done it. I know that. And you're this close right now. Politics is the art of the possible. It's not the art of the perfect. You are elected to represent us, to listen to everyone, but you also have to make your own judgments at some point and decide. I commend you for the effort you've put into this. I commend you for the seriousness and for the vagueness with which you've discussed this tonight. And I really hope that you can come to a conclusion and move the ordinance in some shape or form into a public hearing so that you can vote on adopting it. I hope that can happen next week. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else in the back? It's very dark back there. We're all getting sleepy. I see Mr. Cruz.
Thank you all, and thank you all for rigorous debate and for being here really past my bedtime. I think it's important for us all at first to recognize that everyone engaged in this discussion is fighting for what they believe is the best interest of Narburg. I know myself, I sometimes forget that on my Facebook discussions and when you're not seeing people face to face. But we all care about this community. For my wife and I, we believe replacing the current zone as quickly as possible is what is in the best interest of Narburg. I trust the experts, our Planning and Zoning Commission, who have spent hours, hundreds of hours or thousands, I think was the number given, working on this. And when I hear them say, as Todd just did, that the difficult, that the current zoning code is broke, I believe them. The new Form Based Code is an incredibly comprehensive document that is one that I know reflects the input of many residents and contains lots of compromises. Many of us have different items that we would like to change in this code. Many of those items also contradict one another. None of those changes for me are worth stopping the passing of this code as is. As we talk about density, one of the items in my mind is laps that closed during the week now because of lack of business. When I think about the church on Elmwood, first, I happen to think of it not as a part of South Side, even though technically it's there. For me who walks from South Side, and I should have said at the beginning, One Woodside Avenue, Ken Kravitsky. When I walk from South Side to downtown, that's my gateway to downtown. That church is how I know I am in the downtown, or just outside of this. But, and of course, right now, the church is in currently in danger of being torn down. And this all might be a moot point about the church. We're spending a lot of time talking about something that we expect of demolition permanent at some point. If the zoning happens right now, though, nothing happens at that church. There still has to be a conditional use area. Nothing can happen. If the zoning doesn't pass right now or in the very near future, we aren't a herd. There's an expectation of potential tear downs. That, to me, is the imminent threat. I think there's time to work on the church. There's time to work on South Harvard Avenue. I think there's significantly less time to work on changing our current zoning code as it is. Thank you.
Meera Shak, I have 149 Marion Avenue, member of the Planning Commission. And I have to say also, like several other people, I am really heartened because I can see that in fact there's almost unanimity, or I think unanimity amongst the council and the people in the audience, that one chief concern as Narburg residents right now is tear downs. And one point of contention is would this new code help protect against tear downs better than the current code? Does it perform enough to protect the town? And I have to say, I'm not a planner myself, but the process, I can say as a member of the Planning Commission, the process of going through and trying to design the code, one of our chief goals was specifically to prevent the tear downs. And the people who know or able to assess whether given rules will promote or help mitigate the possibility of tear downs, namely professional planners, multiple times went through and checked every little detail of the code to try to prevent the possibility that the code would do anything in its power besides helping to reduce the possibility of tear downs. So that's one point. The other point that I want to say is I am so pleased that you're so close to passing it. I share so many people's position. Please pass it as soon as possible. We've heard that there are about three potential sticking points. It's unclear, are these things that would stop the show or just you want to kind of tweak it? But I would echo everyone's saying, time is of the essence. The day after you pass the code, you can try and see if you can do build outs and see if you can tweak and try out different scenarios with these areas under contention. But as Barbara pointed out, there's imminent danger of more old buildings being torn down in a very destructive way. The one last thing that I will say in regard to the question of apartments is just as a South Sider, as well as a resident in Narburg, I really value the presence of apartments in our town. Someone else mentioned that their mother would like to live in Narburg to help take care of the kids. I'm also in that position. My mom looked around at apartments and had her time, buy new one in her price range. And so I think that, you know, I think that we just, I just want to say that it's really important to acknowledge that there are many Narburg residents who really do value the existence of apartments. And it's not just for elderly parents and for people who might, you know, young families looking for housing to buy. My son right now is a fifth grader at Marion Elementary. He has friends who live in tiny, low-class apartments in Narburg. He has friends who live in really large houses and whose families make twice as much as ours do. That economic diversity is impossible without really valuing apartments. Not just saying, oh, they exist, so we're going to keep them. But really acknowledging their value. Thank you.
This is way past my time too. Dennis Lontani, 306 Grayling. I'm a good historian, and so I kind of bring that historian stuff wherever I go. It's when I moved to Narburg 25 years ago, I kind of brought that interest here. And so I've thought about this town a lot. I've looked at it a lot. Narburg has been changing and developing ever since it began, even before it began. And change is a natural thing for a town. And I think the best thing you can do is try to direct and control it as much as possible. And I think that the new Form Based Code is going to give us the very best chance of being able to help control what happens here in the future. I think the poster child is the houses next door to Sue Liddes. That's your real danger. Apartments are not your, are not your prime concern here. It's what's going to happen to modest-scale housing if people are able to tear them down and put up oversized things. That's what the Form Based Code was all about. Being able to sort of preserve scale, preserve streetscapes, and preserve the livability of town. So I know you're very close to this. I don't see disagreement with this, but I just wanted to say that. And also to sort of thank the people that I've been hearing. Really concerned people, especially newer people, younger people in the borough, who really see it and people who've lived here for a long time and see it and understand what's important about the borough. So I want to thank everybody who came and made their voices heard tonight too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take less than three minutes. I just want to say, I'm really Karen Ariza. And my address is 247 Hampton Avenue. I've been here 21 years. I'm really concerned tonight that now two people in our local government have hit a citizen and slandered. It really, really bothers me.
If you could address the council rather than the audience.
I think actually the audience is more important in this discussion. Because these are two members with power and influence in our community. And there's a citizen who is raising a question in a public forum, a public meeting. If we as citizens can't do that in a democracy where honestly, you guys do still work for us, that's a privilege. Our job is to hold you accountable, and that's a privilege. And that's what I saw happening. How it got turned into slander, I'm not sure, but I do know two things. He needs to educate himself on slander, and so do you. And I sent him the information today. I'll be happy to send it to you because that is not slander. We're not talking about slander here. Number two, the right to know law applies to government entities only. I'm not convinced that Jim actually filed a right-to-know request because you can't do that against a private citizen. I know that. And I also checked just to make sure with the state office today. So if he did, it's not like he violated the law, but he doesn't understand the law. So that makes me feel like his email to a citizen was almost like Bigfooting her to use, throw around a word like slander and then say, and I used the right-to-know request to get this video, that wasn't even true. And it really, really concerns me. And I think that we need to consider that citizens in our community should be able to ask questions of their local government. Thank you.
Which I will try to move through with all due speed. Two letters from Jessica Lyes, living at 200 North Narburg Avenue. And this is a letter that I was going to ask. Important to maintain set of priorities. Oh, you can't read. She is in favor of adopting the Form Based Code as soon as possible. Will summarize. It will be in the record. Patricia Rubay, we deal road. I don't have the street number.
79.
There you are. Thank you. I hope this code will be passed. Jurgen Bonhamos, please pass this code. And I will just note, because he included his credentials, that he is an associate professor in urban studies at the New School in New York City. That's a long commute. Jeff Aysay, from the official, Jeff Aysay, anyone know Jeff's address?
Marymount Avenue.
Marymount Avenue. For the official record, the old code contains an estimated build out of 20, greater than 20%. The new code is just a higher, right around 2%. The exact figures escape me. Why does Planning Commission or Council favor a code that allows for more growth? Why would they originally designed to have less growth than would already exist? I am strongly opposed to a viewpoint that favors increases in structures and people and cars and what is already very dense. I'm not even sure it's being presented in the proper context. Little discussion about statistics and increasing. The reality is that not only is the new code meant to dissuade certain design elements, which most of your questioners support and encourage your reservation over tear down, again, highly supported, it leaves open the door to development that many do not want to see occur at a 20% figure. Thank you, Jeff. Melissa Muth, 106 Iona. Please pass the Form Based Code. No. She says she just liked my presentation, huh? Sorry, Melissa, I can strike that. Amy Katuski Feldman. She was at a recent meeting. I don't have her street address here. Oh, 204 Morris Avenue. Very interested in us passing the Form Based Zoning Code. Keith Jones. I'm convinced Narburg is on the right track. Let's voice my support for the new code. Robert McGreevy, 149 Marion Avenue. Support for the Form Based Zoning Code. Michelle Condo, 115 Marion Avenue. Please pass the Form Based Zoning Code. The specific note here that her mother lives in an apartment nearby so that she can help care for the children. Ms. Fordner, we already read your letter.
Well, I can read my letter.
Okay.
There's six of us who signed it.
Yeah, you're right. Come here. We need to understand your neighbors live in the 400 block of Conway who sat in the Apollo, what occurred recently in the 400 block of Dudley, where the existing house was demolished and replaced. We urge council to adopt the Form Based Zoning Code as it is currently drafted as soon as possible. Barbara Fordner, 415 Conway. Jennifer Clark, 410 Conway. Joe McGarrity, 412 Conway. Tracy Hewitt, 423 Conway. Sybil Terris Gitmar, 416 Conway. And Tracy Gaby, 419 Conway. They were all reading script there.
Okay, sorry.
The last letter right on the table. From Councilor Diaz. As, mm-hmm. What do you want me to do?
Sure, I did. I'm one of the council.
Send all members of council. As I have discussed with many of you over the past few months, I believe the time has unfortunately come for me to step down. I therefore resign as a council member of Narburg for our council effective as soon as feasible. Although it has been my honor to serve you on behalf of the people of this wonderful community for the past 27 months, I can simply no longer balance my role as an elected official with my personal and professional commitments and promptly discharge the duties of this office. I know that I leave this wonderful borough in good hands and will appoint a successor and invest the time and energy necessary to move the many important initiatives forward that I leave behind. I wish all of you success as you lead our beloved borough forward very respectfully. Richard William Diaz. So those are the letters. I will just point out, for process, Council, Mr. Diaz is not considered resigned until council accepts his resignation. The next time that we would have an opportunity, we could do that tonight, we could do that at a future meeting. I think maybe Monday night might be more appropriate, as I'm hoping they will be in attendance, so that, you know, this last act is going to be added. Right. And then there is a 30-day period where council will be able to solicit interested parties and interview, and then this council will appoint Mr. Diaz's replacement to fill the remainder of his term. If it is not done within the further days, I believe it goes to Montgomery County, the courts to fix him. Oh, well, there's a more important decision. It goes on and on and on. I think council will be able to make a decision. I know you're really excited about it. Not only exercising your role, but doing it for the first time ever in the history of the nation. Okay, let's get out of here. Action items. Someone could make a motion to add the FEMA floodplain ordinance to the agenda?
Councilmembers, I have a motion to introduce the floodplain conservation ordinance. A move that we add the floodplain ordinance, the motion to the agenda.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It's on the agenda now. Would someone like to make a motion?
I have a motion to introduce the floodplain, the FEMA floodplain conservation ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a discussion. Just a question, maybe text? And it's not really up to us to change it. We just have to do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, unvocated? Take a motion, Friger?
I so move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.